Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Segol ani buju wachea kuekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honor and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share the space now and walk side by side into the future. We were just meeting in committee of the whole closed meeting. We discussed several items: strategic waterfront and potential future federal divestitures, employment land, and public parking supply in the downtown. So, Mr. Clerk, I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting, please.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor George, the council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
And that carries. Next, we have the approval of the added's. We have a delegation and a miscellaneous business item and some minutes in communications. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counsel Holland, seconded by Counsel Turner. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Counsel McLaren.
Thank you. I, Jeff McLaren of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 3, Report Number 45, and Bylaw 2, in that I sit on committees of the applicant corporation.
Thank you, Counsel Holland.
Thank you, Worship. I, Mary Rita Holland, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause C, Report Number 44, as I am employed by Queen's University.
Thank you, Counsel George.
Thank you, Worship. I, Kevin George, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause 2, Report Number 45, as my firm has been contacted by the applicant.
Seeing no other disclosures of pecuniary interest. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have one delegation. Kira Merkley, Clifton U., and Aria Tavacol, pro bono law students, Society Faculty of Law, Queen's University, will appear before council to speak to Item F of Report Number 44, received from the CAO with respect to the Open Government Kingston Work Plan Update. Just a reminder to our delegation that you have five minutes, and I'll invite you up right now.
How do I get the presentation, too?
Can we get the presentation up on the screen, please?
Firstly, I'd like to thank the Mayor and the city clerk for allowing us to come and speak on this matter in relation to the open government plan. So, our project was to kind of assess municipalities across Ontario and the way that Kingston compares to other cities. So, the central part of our project was that we called, we personally called each of the municipalities on this list and ran through kind of their process for public consultations for all zoning and bylaw changes that relate to property. So, this long process kind of brought us to a picture of how municipalities generally treat this process and how they consult the public and how we can kind of do that better. So, in Sudbury and Burlington, for example, the notice of application is put directly on their website. We know that Kingston does that. One thing that we noted, though, was that it was particularly hard to find this kind of roster. So, possibly linking it to the main page might be a way of improving the openness of the process. Additionally, there's no time limit for input at meetings, as we're, we know we're under a five-minute time limit right now, but in Aurelia, Coburg, and Niagara Falls, there is no time limit for speaking at public meetings like this. Other municipalities had 10-minute time limits, but there were actually very few that had five-minute time limits. Finally, the public is invited to speak at more than one meeting in all of these municipalities. There's informal delegation sessions in Coburg, there's more than one meeting in Sudbury and Burlington, and Guelph and Aurelia have two. And the important part is that the public can speak at all of these meetings. They're not just presentations.
So, just to add on to what Kira was saying, there's also some other measures that municipalities take. For instance, neighborhood meetings or open houses that are done in, like Burlington and Sudbury, where they will, the municipality will find a way to consult the neighborhood that's directly affected by the application. And so, in terms of when the recommendation is made by city and when there's a chance for public response, in Peterborough and Coburg, we found that it's all throughout. It could be before the public meeting, at the time when the application is received during the public meeting, or even after the public meeting if there's a revision. In Sudbury, the staff posts its recommendation material online, typically two Fridays before the date of the public meeting, so obviously the public can have a chance to look at it and respond to it during the meeting. And then, in the majority of the other cities that we looked at, so here we're talking about Thunder Bay, Burlington, Niagara Falls, and St. Catherine's, the staff will, sorry, will make its recommendation at the public meeting, and then the public can obviously speak in response to that at the meeting. And this is also the same meeting where the vote is taken.
Moving on to address public engagement specifically after statutory meetings. Most of the municipalities that we called do not provide for any opportunity to speak, for the public to speak after the statutory public meetings, save for Guelph. Guelph does allow for some public or some public discourse and engagement for certain proposals that are found to be contentious, but really no others. And Burlington, on the other hand, does provide for this feedback or this engagement prior to the bylaw or the public statutory meeting for the same contentious issues. As I said earlier, most, especially Coburg and Aurelia, really the next closest ones when it comes to the possibility of public engagement, don't really allow for further engagement following the statutory meeting. We feel that really the additional, or additional venues and possibilities of engagement would bolster Kingston's image of, you know, fair participation and the reflection of its duty to provide for a fair discourse for the public to comment on its proposals. And I think that the standard need not be high, but something else could be done in order to further allow for the public engagement. Most, the most planning processes, processes in municipalities have not changed often. The Planning Act has not changed very often, so usually processes do not either. But we think that just following the minimum could be, or just following the minimum might not be the best way to go, and that the planning processes do and should change, require, or when public, when public engagement and hearings are an issue.
Thirty seconds. Thank you. Kira?
So, just in conclusion, what we found, we also studied the statutes and jurisprudence around this area, and there's kind of a range of acceptability, and Kingston is certainly within that range. We don't mean to imply that you're not, but there are methods of maybe improving the way the public perceives the planning process or the way that the critiques are received through public consultation. And we'd be glad to provide more information on this at your interest.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counsel Bohm.
Thank you, Worship, and through you. Obviously, we're aware that there is a required number of public meetings, statutory meetings during the planning process. Were you guys able to find any type of city that hadn't modernized its approach? Because, I mean, simply holding a public meeting, obviously at a certain time when people can't make it, maybe you have low attendance, or it's the same people every meeting coming. Were there methods or proactive approaches that you discovered during your research that allowed these places to reach a wider audience rather than just the normally engaged citizenry that would normally attend these meetings? Was there different social media-type meetings or different ways of reaching out to people that you discovered? Because obviously, everybody's busy, which means it can be a challenge to put your life on hold and go to a public meeting, and you might be out of town, but you might have all this, this input to give. So, is there, was there other things that you found that could possibly help us with that approach?
Now, none of the towns that we'd spoken to had implemented this yet, but we did, at least in Aurelia, they talked about, they were considering maybe implementing a social media strategy or maybe creating an online survey that people could fill out. So, if actually you were to implement this kind of plan, you would be one of the first. It would be very groundbreaking, so, but there were a few municipalities who were considering something like that.
Okay, so it would be fair to say that this is something that is bubbling to the surface, where it is a challenge to get people to come to an actual physical session at times?
Mm-hmm. Sometimes what people reflected was the problem that you talked about, that the same people come to every meeting, but they did express that they got feedback in other, like alternate ways, like on the phone or through email from other people, and they were interested in, like, other ways of reaching out to them, but there weren't a lot of innovative ways of doing this yet. So, there were, as I said, some cities who were considering it, but no one has yet implemented that kind of thing.
So, is it fair to say?
So, two questions. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Neal.
Thank you. You mentioned that you'd be willing to share some of your research and perhaps the PowerPoint. I think that would be a great idea. Would you be able to share that through our clerks so that all of our planners and all of council would have an opportunity to see it in more, greater depth?
Absolutely. We still have the, obviously, the script that we use to survey these municipalities, and we can send that as well as the data that we gathered from that.
That'd be very helpful. I have one more quick question. I know from some of the personal research that I've done that there are some cities that have multiple public meetings, either triggered by a request of the ward councillor or if it's a complex issue. I think Ottawa and Toronto, I know they're bigger. I believe Burlington sometimes triggers multiple. Have you had an opportunity to look at those, what I would say, exemplars?
A lot of the municipalities that we talked to actually did do multiple, multiple meetings before any kind of bylaw changes. I know that often municipalities that we talked to said that they like to take different formats because it kind of helped people conceptualize the information differently. So, they'd hold an open house first where there could be, like, a lot of question and answer, and someone could be, like, recording the public's concerns, and then it kind of makes the public more comfortable before the official statutory one, was what people were finding. But a large number of municipalities, we found, did do multiple.
Thank you. Counsel Holland.
Thank you, Worship, through you. Thank you for the presentation. I guess one thing that has sort of been touched on in regards to the open government work plan or the open government priority of council is that we have been trying to find ways to, there are lots of reasons to bring, to work on this area, of course. One in particular is to increase the level of public engagement. And so, do you have any thoughts, by that I mean not necessarily just going to meetings or liking things on Facebook, but in sort of genuinely becoming more interested in the political process and therefore gaining more understanding or being educated about, not just the process, but about all of the issues that we're dealing with here? So, did you, I guess if you could just maybe respond to this based on your period in history or the fact that you represent a youth demographic who has typically, has, we've had more difficulties in engaging with younger groups. So, do you have any ideas on, not necessarily just what we could do in this open government framework, but how to engage voters, residents, citizens in meaningful ways and have them become more interested, not just in project by project, but in politics in general?
So, our research didn't quite focus on this area. My own experience would say that making it as easy as possible for people to engage is, it makes the chances of people well greater. I would think that, like, going to campuses and, like, setting up events there and taking kind of, leaving kind of like this area and like, because it just seems like such a, whether that's true or not, it, people perceive it as like a burden to go out of their way to kind of like get educated about this, but I think that maybe going to people and entering their realm is what might help. But I don't know that our research really centered on this, so I, that's just my personal experience. Do either of you have any thoughts?
One thing that we find, like, at least I found effective in the form of our student governments at the university, is they'll often put out some sort of summary or if there's a key implication of a certain decision or, you know, movement, and that'll be pretty easily widespread. And obviously, that's not always the case given certain applications or developments, but if people feel that they have more of a stake in it, it'll definitely spread faster among, at least through online within our generation. So, just some, something easy to absorb and something that has some sort of impact, some sort of implication that's made out, I think, for our group, it would be better.
And really, just to speak briefly, because my colleague has really mentioned something that kind of segues this into this part pretty well, just what the other counsel mentioned earlier, this, not just about the content, but the platform that has to be accessible as well, given the people in our generation nowadays. At least, I speak not, maybe not totally for myself, but as a law student, there's a lot we're doing around, we're jumping all over the place, and a lot of times when we do try to get involved, it's on our phones, in between, jump to classes, going to work, doing volunteering, and to have a, maybe perhaps, an application of some sort, or just a very accessible website where these quick summaries can be found, would bolster the interest as well as the informed general public on what's going on within the municipality.
Counsel McLaren.
Thank you. We seem to have a particularly strange little custom here that we seem to have three readings of a bylaw, a planning bylaw, in one meeting, and it strikes me as a bit of a rushing of the thing, and we've been burned once as a result of this. In your research, have you come across any other cities that read their bylaws three times in the same meeting, or do they usually separate it out?
Do you mean, like, how you interpret that and, like, create standard practice, or do you mean actually reading it in the meetings?
So, our procedure, as I understand it, and the clerk can correct me, we pass a resolution, and then the bylaw is drafted, that brings it into legal effect. And these bylaws, we are mandated by the provincial government to read them three times. So, we vote three times on these bylaws. And usually, you think that a reading should be done separately in separate meetings because it gives you a chance to think, it gives you a chance to consult the public, but we rush it through. We put it all into one meeting. Have you ever encountered anything like this before?
That is actually not something that our research really addressed, because our research was really focused on, like, the public consultation aspect, so we didn't actually address a lot of the behind-the-scenes goings-on around, around how municipalities interpreted in terms of their inner workings and their meeting structure. It was mostly in the relationship with the public that we were focused, so I actually am not sure.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, Counsel Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I don't know if you realize this, it's really fabulous timing because staff have just initiated public consultations on our planning process, and a member of the public is here. The two of us were at one of them two days ago, and one of our specific questions was around the five-minute, 10-minute. Staff has quite an interesting list of cities that I encourage you to cross with each other about it because we're working on the same thing right now, which is really interesting. But what I would like to ask is, a question that did come up that was very important, we all thought. The idea of having a public meeting at the same time the comprehensive report is presented by staff. My question to you is, did cities find that these reports got deferred if the public presented information that really everyone felt hadn't been addressed in the comprehensive report? Because that was our worry.
I'm not 100% sure that I'm understanding, but if I'm correct in my interpretation that if there was a lot of public concern, it took longer for staff's report to come to council and, no, sorry.
No, it was very simply, if the comprehensive report comes to planning and we vote on it, we say yes or no that night. If the public is invited to come and express their concerns, literally 10 minutes before we vote on it, that'll be the first time the public's had a chance to speak. So, we were concerned that the public would, we would all go, oh, the public brought up things we hadn't thought about, we should defer this, so that planning wouldn't actually make a decision that night.
I don't think most municipalities allow for input after staff recommendation is put out, although Coburg does. Do you know how Coburg, sorry, I'll let you handle this.
As far as I know, the way Coburg did is that it allowed, or, I keep doing that. When new information came out, I'm guessing that's in the context, when, let's say, a member of the public does bring up some new information that causes planning staff to revisit their, their plan, Coburg does sort of, I would say, defer their plan to kind of revise it, to take into account these new facts. But I'm not too sure barring any sort of, to the level, the extent of actual significant new facts that this is done, or if there are simply concerns of the council that causes the deferral. Because I think it's a, it's a different degree of things that must be incorporated versus maybe perhaps a dissenting opinion.
Thank you very much. So, moving on, we have no briefings tonight. Are there any petitions to present? We have no motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery. We have no deferred motions, so we move on to reports. First, Report Number 44 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counsel O'Sannick, that Report Number 44 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted. I would point out to council that procedurally, we will have to separate Item C as a result of Counselor Holland's declared pecuniary interest.
Thank you. Are there any other separations? Counsel Shell?
F, please, as in fly?
Counsel Hutchinson?
D.
D.
Pardon.
Okay. So, we will first vote on the balance items. So, Item A is the Contract Amendment Renewal for Terranet Enterprises Incorporated. Item B, Industry Stewardship Plan Materials Services Agreement with Automotive Materials Stewardship. And Item E, Award of Contract Crack Ceiling Various Locations. And that carries. Next, we have Item C, which is being separated for Counsel Holland's pecuniary interest. Alma Modern Society Queen's University Student Government Partnership Agreement. We'll call the vote, please. And that carries. Item D, Review of School Sites, Potential Future Acquisition. Counsel Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship. Just while I find my spot here. First of all, as it indicates on the review of school sites, that we, it was a new process, and so I wanted to ask staff if the city would use a similar process in the future, and does staff foresee when such a time for the process to occur again, you know, in the future?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, we would definitely recommend this process, and the way that this particular working group was actually set up, I think, was very beneficial in terms of the terms of reference. And I'm also aware that there are two members of the working group that have expressed an interest in continuing to be involved in various city committees or working groups in the future.
More specifically, I note that there's intention by staff to improve the property across from, at 362 Montreal Street that's across from St. Patrick's Catholic School. And I was wondering if that would involve, that the whole section is just sort of vacant, if we would be willing to consider landscaping that area so it looks better.
So, Counsel Hutchinson, does that, does that reference the recommendation that's in front of us?
Yes, because it's in the report. Okay.
Commissioner Hurdle?
It's actually, staff informs us that they're going to do certain things.
Okay, so it's a detail about the St. Peters property? Okay. Commissioner Hurdle?
Well, not St. Peters, it's, it's St. Patrick's.
Oh, St. Patrick's. Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, as part of the review from the working group, one of the things that was actually quite interesting and that came out of the conversation was that the working group noted that instead of the city purchasing potentially any of the properties at our former school sites for the use of off-site, off-street parking, was to make better use of the current property that the city owns at 362 Montreal, which has space available to expand on parking for patrons, but also for off-street parking for that particular area around St. Patrick's Street. So, to Counsel Hutchinson's question is that, yes, we can definitely look at some landscaping work through that expansion.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote on Item D. Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Holland.
Thank you, Worship. So, I guess first of all, I'd like to thank the members of the working group for their contributions, and also just wanted to point out that the recommendation, I guess mostly through comments from the working group and some contributions by staff, have indicated that St. Peter's Catholic School Site, which is located in Kings Court area, be recommended for these improvements. And I just wanted to mention that the Ronne Valley Park, which is at the, is on one half of that site, backs onto the school property essentially, is the, probably the most popular recreational facility currently in the area, so it's, it will be a great benefit to see that, and it also really desperately needs some repairs, so it would be wonderful to see the enhancement of recreational space in that, on that site. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote. And that carries. Item F, Open Government Kingston Work Plan Update. Counsel Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I did reach out to staff, saying that as I read these, the report, I began to get totally lost in the weeds because there's so much in here, plus we're working on planning, we have a number of initiatives for public engagement. So, staff helped me create the questions that I will ask, and I think they're ready for. There are a number of different strategies and work plans in the report. Is there a coordinated approach to implementing these strategies and work plans? Who at staff level is leading these efforts, and will council receive further updates on these initiatives?
See you, Hunt.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, so I'll take that in terms of the overall project and the priority of it for the corporation and obviously for council and the engagement with the public. So, there, it is a very overarching plan that's before you, and there are a number of elements, which includes openness and transparency, which includes technology supports, which includes some of the systems that we put in place, like the DASH system recently. The- The customer relationship management system that we're in the process of putting in place that'll essentially link the work order systems together, so that we're able to close the loops when customers call in at the calls, at the contact center. That documentation can actually find its way through, through the system, so the departments actually complete the work orders and close the loop, so that it responds back to a customer. And of course, the biggest area that council is focused on is public engagement, and the whole strategy that we are undertaking at the present time. So, at the special meeting of council, at the end of April, April 25th, we will be talking, as one of the points at that meeting, about the public engagement strategy, the work that's been underway, and the, and the efforts to secure input from the public, and get, give an update to council, and continue to move forward with additional consultation with the view of coming back to council or through the appropriate committee by September. But all of these to say that they are connected together, and Desiree Kennedy is leading the overall project. And council will receive regular reports on a regular basis, but that doesn't mean that when we are working on specific initiatives, like the public engagement strategy, we won't have a focused report and decisions for council to make around that particular approach and policy.
Deputy Mayor Neal?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to mention that Kingston Public Library had a very good working group that's come up with a public consultation plan that looked at some exemplars like Calgary and elsewhere. And I'll ask that that be shared with us. I think you'll find there's some excellent recommendations and protocols there. In looking over the report, I know that we're addressing the whole idea of open data. And I think, from conversations I've had with CAO before, I think there's some agreement, we've got a little bit of catching up to do in that area. Some other municipalities, for instance, I believe all of our buses now have GPS, and that information from, in an appropriate platform, and I understand we're planning to do that in the future, could make, could make our bus travel even, even more accurate. And the other thing is, some municipalities, because Public Works trucks, I understand, also have GPS now, would be great, before I shovel out my driveway, just to see the plow coming down the street, to plow me back in, if I could actually check on GPS and see, oh, the plow will be here in 20 minutes, I'll wait and shovel out my walk then. Perhaps, perhaps those are already in the plans, but it would be good to hear.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, plans are definitely in place. I would say that transit is probably more advanced than public works at this point in time. I'm not sure of the exact timetable, but it won't be too long before we will be able to publish through a, what we call an API, transit locational data through, through our open data website. With respect to public works, I believe the acquisition of the appropriate equipment is not all in place yet, but at some point in the, in the near future, hopefully, I don't want to have it, put a timeframe to it just yet, but I'm fairly certain that that will start to, to appear, perhaps before the end of term of council, for sure.
Thank you. I look forward to that.
Thank you. We will call the vote on item F. And that carries. Report number 45 from Planning Committee?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number 45 from the Planning Committee. There is an administrative amendment, moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal, that will be coming up on the board shortly. So we'll vote for the amendment first, and then for the, are we going to do the two votes, or just one?
Procedurally, we should vote for the two items.
Okay, so we'll vote for the amendment first, and then the report as amended. So I won't present it right now, or I'll go ahead. Okay. Ask that it be received for consideration with two votes.
Okay.
Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by deputy mayor Neal, that report number 45 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so we have three clauses. We need to deal with them individually anyways, because of some declarations of pecuniary interest. So first, number one, approval of an application for zoning bylaw, amendment 671 Brock Street. We'll call the vote, please. And that carries. Number two, approval of an application for draft plan of subdivision and draft plan of condominium, 311 Coniker Drive. And that carries. Clause number three, approval of an application for zoning bylaw, amendment 735-743 King Street West. So, we have an amendment?
Okay, the following amendment was requested by planning staff, moved by councillor Shell, seconded by deputy mayor Neal, that clause three of report 45 received from the Planning Committee be amended by adding the following in paragraph two, following the words, "Report number PC 17032, as amended as follows. Section 1.2(c) For the purposes of interpretation, the lot lines within the A5.519 zone shall be: 1. Front lot line, the southern property line abutting King Street shall be deemed the front lot line; 2. Rear lot line, the northern property line abutting Baden Street shall be deemed the rear lot line; 3. Side lot line, all other property lines shall be deemed side lot lines. Section 1.3 (to now read) By adding the following section in Part 8, "Exception to various zone classifications as follows: Section 520, bracket 735-743 King Street West, close bracket, notwithstanding the provisions of Section 5 and Section 11 hereof, to the contrary, the lands designated A5.520, on Schedule A hereeto, the following regulation shall apply. A. Accessory building, 1. An accessory building shall be no closer than 0.5 meters to any side or rear lot line. In Section 1.5(c) (to read) Detached garages shall be located a minimum of 6.0 meters from the street line.
Would anyone like to speak to the amendment? Seeing none, we will call the vote. This is on the motion to amend. And that carries. On the item as amended, please vote. And that carries. Report number 46 from Heritage Kingston.
So this is report number 46 from Heritage Kingston, moved and seconded. It is also a housekeeping matter, normally would have been with the rest of the report.
Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Shell, that report number 46 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
There's just the one clause. And that carries. We have nothing from Committee of the Whole, information report 2017 municipal debt limits. We have no information reports, members of council, miscellaneous business. And we do have a couple of motions. Number one, that the resignation of Richard Dobbing from the North Kingston Secondary Plan Community Working Group be accepted with regret, and that Rebecca Darling be appointed to the North Kingston Secondary Plan Community Working Group as the Greater Kingston Chamber of Commerce representative. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Turner. And that carries. Number two, that the resignation of Ms. Sarah Libera from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received with regret. Moved by deputy mayor Neal, seconded by councillor Holland. And that carries. Number three, the following councillors have indicated that they are willing to serve as deputy mayor for two-month increments. Councillor Holland, councillor Neal, councillor Stroud, councillor, or councillor Turner.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll draw the names, and we'll put the list together, and there's an opportunity to make changes up until the next council meeting. So for May and June, it is councillor Stroud. For July and August is councillor Holland. For September and October is councillor Turner. And for November and December is councillor Neal.
Okay. Okay, can I have a mover, please, for that motion? Moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor O'Sannick. And that carries. New motions. Number one, moved by deputy mayor Neal, seconded by councillor Stroud. Whereas a severe multi-vehicle accident took place east of Kingston on March 14th involving a hazardous, highly corrosive chemical spill, fluorosilic acid, resulting in one death and 28 injuries, including a number of municipal first responders in a code orange at Kingston General Hospital, as well as the closure of Highway 401 for over a day. Whereas the severe road conditions during a blizzard created very hazardous road conditions in the subsequent accident, therefore be it resolved that the city of Kingston asks the Ontario Ministry of Transportation and Ministry of Environment and Climate Change to prohibit the transportation of all hazardous materials during severe weather conditions, and that this motion be shared with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, MPP Sophie Koala, MP Mark Garretson, Premier Whip, Opposition Leaders Patrick Brown and Andrea Horath, Minister Stephen Del Duque, Minister Glenn Murray, and all Ontario municipalities with populations over 40,000. Deputy Mayor Neal?
Thank you. I'll be, I'll be brief, which always surprises people. But I, I know that some people have asked, why would I bring this motion forward when indeed the Highway Traffic Act, hazardous materials legislation is of provincial jurisdiction? And the reason is quite simple. The first responders that attend to these kinds of accidents, in fact, are municipal employees, with the exception of the OPP. The OPP is backed up by municipal police. Our firefighters are often the first on the accident scene. Our, our paramedics, our front neck paramedics were at this particular scene, and some of them were injured by this. So it's a health and safety issue for our municipal workers. And I'm not suggesting that we should ban truck traffic in inclement weather, but I think when the hazard is so great with the transportation of this kind of, of, these kinds of materials, I think it would be sensible if there was some kind of protocol to keep those trucks out of white-out blizzard conditions. And so, I, I hope that we can pass this, and other municipalities can also support this. And code orange, perhaps my secondor may wish to talk about it, but as I understand it, it severely impacts, greatly impacts the hospital during that period, because they have to be prepared for massive casualties. And, and the result is that the day, day operations of the emergency room are curtailed greatly as a result of this. So, I hope that we can pass this, and hopefully unanimously.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud?
Thanks, your worship. Yes, code orange did happen at KGH, and it was the first actual code orange that I can remember where it was an actual influx of multiple casualties. I think it was, there was another called years ago because of an incident, but none of those casualties ever actually reached KGH. They were handled in other, smaller locations on that, in that event, I seem to recall. This one, you know, around 30 casualties and one fatality, it did impact the hospital. I'm proud of my colleagues who were serving that day. Myself, I was not on duty that day, so it didn't affect me personally. The, the point I would like to make about this motion is that although it's a transnational highway that crosses the province, that has thousands of vehicles every day, transporting often probably quite hazardous things, as a routine daily, daily occurrence, in the middle of a, of a blizzard, it really seems to many people to have been preventable. A preventable death and preventable mass casualties, and who knows how much loss in, in productivity and vehicle damage and everything else, not to mention the PTSD, post-traumatic stress, that may still be to come from the first responders that were at the scene. The fatality happened at the scene, and was witnessed by many first responders. So all this, if, if preventable, you know, anything we can do to encourage the upper levels of government to, to work proactively to prevent this kind of tragedy in the future, I'm all for that, and that's why I'm happy to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. A question to the mover and secondor. I take it there is a definition of hazardous materials? You know, okay.
It's a provincial.
It's a provincial list, so there is a definite list. I realize that this is a motion to, of suggestion, but when I learned what it was that had spilled, I really was quite terrified for everyone involved, because this is an incredibly scary chemical. And I felt for the people involved because of the fear, and because it probably took quite a while to figure out what it was that the smell was, and what you shouldn't touch. So I'm certainly going to support it. It's a suggestion. We need to keep this on the front burner, I think, so I will be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to pass it on to the previous stepenary mayor, if I can. Councillor Holland, you take the chair.
I take the chair. I recognize you.
Thank you. So I'll say a couple of things. First of all, I agree with the intent of this. We're, we're addressing an important health and safety issue that came up a few weeks ago. And it seems to me that the intent of the mover and the secondor is to start a conversation. I believe that that's why we're sending this to all of these municipalities across Ontario, and to the provincial government as well. Very much in support of that. I think what strikes me is that we are...
I think what strikes me is that we are moving immediately to ask for a complete prohibition, which could very well be the solution that we want to look at. It seems to me strange, though, if we want to have a conversation, that we might want to leave it up for the options of other possibilities that could enhance safety. So I would like to offer up a simple amendment, if I could. I just passed it to the clerk, if we could put that up.
While we're doing that, it looks like there's a seconder. Is there a seconder? Okay.
Thank you. So just very briefly, this would just be an amendment that replaces the word prohibit with consider additional safety measures regarding. And if I can speak to the amendment, it's not to, this does not preclude prohibit, but allows for a general discussion on other safety measures that quite frankly could be more palatable or could be more practical that we could do in the interim. Starts the discussion going. Concern is that if you immediately jump to the prohibition, that some may outright dismiss it as just something that's impractical. This allows for a more broader discussion. So certainly I'd like to support this. I think that this is a better way to go, and so certainly hope that you can support my amendment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the amendment? Okay. Seeing none, we will call the vote on the amendment. Oh, sorry. Okay. Councillor Hutchinson, did anyone vote? Can we do this? He already voted. Councillor Hutchinson wanted to speak to it.
We haven't closed the voting for this, so please go ahead, but we'll take the vote right afterwards.
Okay. Go ahead, councillor Hutchinson.
I was wondering if, as a further compromise, I propose this to the mover, that, and it would more capture the sense of urgency that's in the third clause here, that we, just as a suggestion, replacing the word prohibit with the phrase, consider additional safety measures, including prohibition. So it leaves it completely open, but still captures what the previous, what the mover and seconder seem to be after.
Okay, so.
So through you, acting deputy mayor, that would be an amendment to the amendment.
Fine, then I will make the amendment to the amendment. If I can get a seconder.
Okay. Is there a seconder? Okay. So we now have an amendment to the amendment. Is everybody clear what that includes? Anyone wish to speak to it? Deputy Mayor Neil?
Just very quickly, I was a little hesitant about the total loss of the word prohibit and consider definitely, in my mind, weakens and was almost an alteration of the intent of the motion, and I wouldn't have been able to vote for it. The amendment to the amendment, I think, captures both your intent and my intent. So I'm speaking in favor of the amendment for the amendment.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone wish to speak? Councillor Turner?
Thank you. And through you, deputy, deputy mayor Holland, I think. I'm just not comfortable with this. I think it's out of our jurisdiction. I think it's meant in good faith, and I think that, you know, I understand the whole perspective of this, but I don't like to be telling people to prohibit the transportation of all hazardous materials during severe weather conditions. So it, we're all of a sudden becoming weathermen, all of a sudden we're becoming the Ministry of Transportation. So I think we have to be very careful in our wording. It was a horrible accident that took place, but as a municipality, I think we should open the conversation, but I think we should be very careful how we word our conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Bowman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Acting deputy mayor.
Acting deputy mayor. I guess it's a good thing we can't go amendment to amendment to amendment to amendment, because it kind of seems like what's happening here is there was an intent to have a conversation about this, and then the intent of the amendment to the amendment was to kind of, again, steer that conversation. So yes, it was a very bad accident, we understand that. The last thing I think we'd want to do is push something up with a direction which would essentially kind of almost gear the conversation a certain way. And again, this is simply a recommendation to start a conversation. So in starting a conversation, I think you want to give the scenario that happened without necessarily starting the conversation aimed a certain way. The other thing is, in my thoughts, in the back of my mind, if you prohibit all vehicles during a storm, what's going to happen is they're all going to have to pull over somewhere. The storm's going to end, they're all going to be in a rush to then get back on the road at the same time and try to make up time. So instead of spreading all those vehicles out, which would have happened if we can have a real conversation about this and some other form of solution could come up, you're just going to have them all pull over and then all come back on the road at the same time, which could just be another recipe for disaster. So that's one of the reasons why I don't really want to support the amendment to the amendment, because I think the key thing here is to have a holistic conversation about a good, solid strategy, instead of just kind of steering the direction towards prohibition. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. I think the purpose of this amendment to the amendment is not, is specifically not to do that. We're giving one option, a preferred option in the case of a particularly bad chemical here. I mean, I've heard the story about what happened here. We had first responders who were responding to a chemical spill they did not know how to handle immediately. One of the solutions that was provided was to spray water to try and clean it off the victim in the driver's seat, but it was a cold weather. That water ended up being the source of killing him, of him dying. The result was that we are putting municipal services on the front line in a very, very problematic case, and this is going to lead to a whole bunch of other problems with our services that we're providing. These people who are traumatized by this and who may experience post-traumatic stress are going to be taken off our ability to provide these services. This is perhaps a preferred option, but it is not the only option. That is why the original amendment allows for a greater conversation. There may be other chemicals that just require less than that. The purpose here is to have the full conversation with a suggestion, not with the implication that this is the final solution. So the point of this is to actually broaden what we're looking for, to see the whole spectrum of dangerousness, and to provide possible solutions, but not to prejudge it right ahead. There could be other things that might allow for prohibition and not having the scenario that you put out there earlier. So I am most certainly providing, supporting this, because it is actually the best of both worlds, and it starts the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McLaren. Anyone else? Councillor Hutchinson.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I guess I would just say that the amendment to the amendment preserves the mayor's previous amendment, it just adds to it, and attempts to find a compromise wording about something we are all concerned about. And so I will stress what the mayor said, which was, which I thought was good, actually, consider additional safety measures, and then I just added, including prohibition. That's all. It doesn't say you have to accept it, the province is going to make up their own minds anyway, but we're just saying we'd really rather not have a revisited this, and we don't think other people should ever revisit this. So is there anything we can do? And this councillor, Bowman, for, there are problems, right? No doubt. And the mayor said, it's hard to see where we're going to go here, but we're, the key word here is ask the interim Ministry of Transportation and the Ministry of Environment. So that's all it says. And when they read it, they'll see we're just asking them to have a conversation. So that's why I asked you to vote for the amendment, and of the amendment, unfortunately it takes a bit to get there, but the amendment and then the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With apologies to councillor Hutchinson, okay. Sorry, never mind, I missed, I thought I missed a speaker there. All right. So we'll call the question on the amendment to the amendment. Please vote. Okay, and that carries. So now we will return to the amended amendment, the first, just one second, sorry, to the motion, the amended motion. The amendment.
The motion to amend.
The motion to amend, sorry. Back to the motion to amend. Okay, please, or, sorry. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote on the motion to amend. And that carries. Now we're going to vote on the motion as amended. Did you wish to speak to it? Sorry, councillor Neil?
Just very briefly, to sum up, I, we are employers, and as employers, we are bound to be responsible for the health and safety of our employees. And those include firefighters, they include police, they indirectly, because we do most of the funding, include the paramedics that responded to this particular accident. So I think it's critical that we send a strong unanimous motion that we indeed are responsible employer, employers concerned about the health and safety of our first responders.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we will call the question on the motion as amended. Please, please vote. And that carries. Thank you. I return the chair.
Thank you very much. New motion number two, moved by councillor Hutchinson, seconded by councillor Holland. The staff be directed to modify reference plan thirteen R dash two zero nine two four by separating the portion of part three that runs along the Bailey Broome factory from the site triangle portion, and that when completed, the modifications be submitted to council without the site triangle. Councillor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Your Worship. This motion affects two pieces of property important to the city. The first is the Bailey Broome factory, which we voted to preserve, and have now got a, raw designs bought it, and they're going to redevelop it, and this is important to us for that area as well, in general, and the city. So, and the other being the Wellington Street Extension Corridor, which I don't think needs any introduction. So this motion allows the city to do two things. It allows the Bailey Broome factory to be developed by supplying the designation of public highway to Catarockway Street to the edge of the Bailey Broome factory, and allows for servicing. So, which is crucial to the redevelopment. But it also allows us to stick to the spirit, if not the actual wording, but certainly the spirit of the motion we passed back in March third, two thousand and fifteen, which indicated that, that we would halt the expenditures through the acquisition of land and construction of Wellington Street and until further direction from council. So it separates the two little bits and says, okay, we'll preserve the part along the Bailey Broome, and we'll just leave the, the site triangle as a separate part. And this can be done, and it also helps us preserve the idea, the public perception that we're not going to prepare the WSE before the Kingston Secondary Plan is completed, or at some point after that. So I think it solves a number of issues and problems, and so I would encourage council to vote for this, and so that we can achieve all these ends. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Neil, can you take the chair, please?
I can, and I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I just have one question for staff. Would this motion in any way inhibit the redevelopment of the Bailey Broome factory?
I'm pointing for the mayor to recognize you, but I should recognize you. Go ahead.
Through you, deputy mayor Neil. No. The separation of part three, which is currently in the reference plan, as it's understood in the motion in front of us, would create, in essence, two separate parts. The one part that would then be along the frontage of Catarockway Street would in turn be dedicated as part of the public highway for Catarockway Street. That would serve to enhance the current limited right-of-way width that we have on Catarockway Street, but wouldn't impair any of the redevelopment for the Bailey Broome property.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing, oh. Councillor George.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I asked the question of the councillor two weeks ago, who's going to pay for this? Because, and I, I heard him say just a few moments ago, that it was staying with the, the word he used is just slipping my mind right now, but with the, a passed motion in regards to the acquisition of lands for the Wellington Street Extension, potentially. But we already own this land, as I understand it, so there is no acquiring the land, that's already there. It just seems to me that there's a few people that are scared to death that the Wellington Street Extension may go forward sometime in their lifetime, and that it can't move anywhere if this little, small sliver, little triangle piece of land sitting out there is not declared public highway. And I said to the councillor two weeks ago, so I'll ask him to answer me tonight, that if he and the few constituents that are so adamant this shouldn't move forward, as staff had originally recommended to us, are they willing to pay the cost associated with going through with the renewal of this reference plan and all associated legal costs to re-transfer, repin the properties and everything else that's associated with it? I said to him, if he's willing to cough up the money and his group, then I would support it. If they're not, I will vote in opposition to this. So may I ask the question of the councillor, has he come up with a financial means by which to cover this off so it's not being burdened by the taxpayer out there?
I think that's a question that the mover may choose to answer. We don't ask one another questions directly that compel councillors to respond, but if he wishes to speak to that in his closing remarks, that's perfectly allowable.
Okay, well, I can wait and see what he has to say in his closing remarks. I just find it a little ridiculous when I hear certain members of council around the horseshoe deliberating and talking about saving the taxpayers' expenditures and so on and so on, and they're so free to make a move on something as ridiculous as this. So anyways, I'll wait and see what the councillor has to say before I cast my vote. Thank you.
Now that it's getting more contentious, I'll pass the chair back to you.
Thank you. It's perfect timing. I'm happy to take the chair back. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Bowman?
Thank you, Your Worship. And through you, I'm actually inclined to agree with what councillor George said. I think the specter of the Wellington Street Extension is now hovering over almost all these little changes which seem procedural, but if we go in and start nitpicking all these little things, then we're adding workloads to staff, we're adding cost to staff, and it's getting to the point where, you know, if there's a small, tiny, little piece of land that we own, and we're simply rededicating it and facilitating something, and somebody thinks at some point it may become part of the Wellington Street Extension, then it seems like there's this, we've got to pounce on this and stop that one little thing from happening, and then we'll throw off the whole WSE if and when it ever comes to fruition. So with that in mind, I'm looking quite forward to the closing remarks on this issue, because it'll determine how I vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hutchinson, you have the floor.
Sure.
Sure. The, I'll remind Counselor George of what I actually said. I'll ignore his impassioned, his impassioned way of expressing himself. The, what I said is that we would, by voting for this motion, we would be supporting the spirit, not the letter, okay, but the spirit of the motion that said we wouldn't purchase any other property without the consent of council. Okay, so I'm, I'm well aware that we own the, the property. I said as much last, the last time, okay? So, but the point is that we did say that we would not, we would not proceed with the WSC. And, and people have been saying to people, encouraging people to come out, the city included, to take part in the Kingstown secondary plan, part of, which was occasioned largely because of any issues around the possibility of the WSC, that if they came out, then, that, that their voice could be counted in that way. And so I think in some sense, it speaks to public trust about our processes. And so what I found, and I said this before as well, that I had a heck of a time explaining what was happening there. And it may seem minor, but it does release us from, this little motion here releases us from being seen to be perhaps contradictory in some form, some form. So that's why I brought the motion forward. After long conversation with the Director of Engineering about what was possible and how it could be done. And so, that's what I would say. I don't think it's, if we, our taxation system would fall apart if we suddenly said, you know, the, the mayor has to pay for the pothole on his street because he wants to have it done more quickly, and, or any other similar type proposal. And so I'm asking you to vote on the merits of the motion, not the cost, which is not that great compared to the cost of the WSC, which is multi-millions. So I'm not personally really worried about that. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we will call the vote on motion number two. And that carries by a vote of seven to four. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Shell, that the minutes of City Council Meeting number two thousand and seventeen zero nine, held Tuesday, March the twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen, and the minutes of Special City Council Meeting number two thousand and seventeen zero eight, held Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen, be confirmed.
Please vote. And that carries. We have some tabling of documents and number of communications. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws, please.
Counselor McLaren, if you could step out for the first two bylaw votes, please? Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Ossanek, that bylaw two be given its first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor George, that bylaw number two be given its third reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Ossanek, that bylaws one, eight, and nine be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Ossanek, that bylaws one and three through nine be given their third reading.
Please vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Bohm. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.